Before we start, I'd like to just thank or recognize everyone in attendance this evening. Starting again the table, we have the City of Danbury Finance Director, Dave Sengler. We have Eleo Longo, our Danbury Public Schools Finance Director. We have Dr. Bill Glass, our Deputy Superintendent. We have the Board Vice Chairman, Richard Nellie. We have Board Secretary Kathy Molinaro, Board Member Bob Taggersack, Board Member Susan LeWright, Board Chair Irving Fox, Councilwoman Nancy D'Amici, Council President Joe Cavo, Councilman Ben Chini's Joyce Edin.
Director of Special Services.
Director of Special Services. And our Human Resources Director, Kim Thompson, and our Superintendent, Dr. Pasquale, and members of the media in attendance. I wanted to start out by thanking the Councilmen for attending this evening. This year, as with many of our prior budget, or most recent budget years, we are living in very difficult economic times. And I think us being able to work together between the board and the council is going to be very critical as we go through this budget cycle, which will all precedents. Just to recap of where we are in the process before we turn it over to the administration for presentation. At this point, the school budget for the next school year has not formally been presented to the Board. There has been a Finance Committee meeting where the members have first been discussed. At our next regular Board meeting next Wednesday, the budget will be formally presented to the Board of Education. And then we will be holding a special meeting on February 2nd for adopting this budget. And that's per the city charter. The budget has to be delivered by the 10th, 15th. At that, at which point, the Mayor will receive the school board's budget. So, the point we're at now is we're gathering information. We have a proposal from the Superintendent. And so, the Superintendent and his Cabinet will be going over what various cost factors we're facing going into the next school year. And so, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Passquale.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My point is work. Those of you that were at the meeting last week, there's some new information, but new information really on the numbers. The presentation's basically pretty much the same. But, for all of us, again, I think we need to be mindful that our job, your job, my job, is really to make sure that the core levels of education programming that we maintain those. Some people define them differently. We'll talk about our definition of what those are. I do have a personal philosophy about things, folk curriculum, that are part of experiences. But we need to really, you know, look at what is the core, what do we expect to deliver, what are we required to deliver. And all of you know that we are under the supervision of the State Board of Education regarding how come the building plans. And that becomes part of our planning, that becomes part of core. So, there are some things, for example, we are looking into with them now that are part of the plan that we may have difficulty in delivering in this current time. There are legal and contractual requirements, we'll speak to those. We had a favorable year regarding our employees next year, thanks to our negotiating team in the Board. And the arbitrations that we received have been in best interest of economic planning for the district. Every position we have open, we're making a determination if it can be eliminated or restructured. Restructured means we may create a cycling position. Some of the jobs, functions are essential, but, you know, if it's an open position, it's how we maybe can handle it differently. And legally, we may not be able to. If not, then we have to, you know, hire that position. We're talking about no new programs. There are some, there are things, such as graduation requirements that I'm telling the Board that we may have to put on hold. We're trying to get numbers on those. The new state requirements from the State Board of Education are going to go in effect in 2018 or '19. And a lot of it had to do with the choices of youngsters in the area of the sciences. And those require labs. And Danbury had before, some years ago, I don't know how many, when you put that addition on in high school, and put labs on in science, which would have been a major cost driver, that, you know, we have ample labs, thank goodness, to handle the added requirements for youngsters to take more science if that's part of their graduation plan. Ours is going in staff. So, we're doing some analysis on a number of students that are taking four years of science, and how many students are taking more languages, and see the effect. But at this point, we're saying, we really want to study that, there really no new programs other than the area of our technology management system. We have a current one that's going to be replaced because it's antiquated, and it doesn't deliver the information that it needs to, it actually creates more work for individuals by utilizing the program that we have at this point. Next slide. This is a hard one, and I'll tell you why I said this to the Board. We get calls, some really, some very nice individuals want to donate, or the PTOs want to purchase. And it's all good stuff, except our technology support system is finite. We just can't grow exponentially and expect them to be there and assist everyone to either reprogram or to repair the technology. So, we're saying no, which is really kind of hard for us to say no in technology. But, you know, we really have to be very careful about who we're willing to accept. Because our people tell us, we can't get out there and service it. Teachers become frustrated that, I got this new equipment, no one's showing me how to do it. PTOs and parents are upset that I've given and stuff, why can't they use it? Well, it just hasn't worked that way. It's not a, there's not been one correlation to that right now. So, we have to really put a moratorium on it. Or, some names will give us some technology people, and they adopt the schools, someone pays them salaries. If you're willing to look at that. There we go about the graduation requirements, delay, or we need to re-study that. Relocate existing staff resources wherever possible. And we are, we may have to relocate individuals in order to be on site, to do some things And to look for cost containment. Between now, between last week and now, I think the budget has moved from 4.3 with some refining to about 4.02 or something like that. We're going to keep refining that budget. We've all, you all at the Board are telling us to be, you know, very cautious of where we're going financially. So, we're really trying to hone down that budget. We're working with David in technology, in our insurances, in purchasing, to see how in fact, we can, you know, really get to that number one, providing the core, and try and keep the costs down so that it's a reasonable budget for that, so that it's responsible. Next slide. What we're trying to do is to do as a team, and Bill has the next portion, he's going to talk about his target of the core subjects here.
Thank you, Sal. This is a trickier slide, it's the most complex of all the slides we have. But we think it's a critical slide. If you look at the target up there, the dartboard, last year, we cut into the actual core of the school system. Prior to that, we were nipping around the edges. There were things that we thought were supplemental, and they were good things for kids, but we were able to pare those away, given the difficult economic climate. Last year, we cut into the core, and then we cut again in more deeply. So, now we're only looking at these three concentric circles. Let me explain those to you. This is the concept that we're using in terms of how we're making very difficult decisions. I just want to punctuate this. You heard Sal speak to it, Eleo, I'm sure, will speak to it, I want to mention it as well. Irving has spoken to it before. We feel very comfortable working with the City Council, we feel very comfortable working with the Mayor, we feel very comfortable working with David and his team. I think in times past, folks have tried to rally the troops and said, let's go storm the Bastille. We are the Bastille, because we're all in the same building together. So, we're really trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and figure out how we can maintain what we have. We've really eliminated the concept of expansion or growth. The most mission-critical element of this is the piece that is at the very heart of the Board's mission. And we're saying, at all costs, maintain support for reading, writing, and math. And our argument is, if you don't have the three Rs, we don't have a school system. And we know that is almost pathetically simple, and what kind of school system do you have when you're looking at just reading, writing, and math? We're arguing, if you don't have those three pieces, you don't have a school system. The next concentric circle out is a hyper top priority for us. These are any initiatives that are required by law. So, when you look at something called State Statute 1016B. 1016B says, each school system must maintain a planned systematic and ongoing program of destruction in the 11 mandated areas. It also talks, the state also talks, state law talks about the need to maintain requirements with educational law in the area of special education, in the area of personnel. Joyce and Kim being here tonight to represent those, of course. And lastly, contractual obligations. And as Sal mentioned, we were, depending how you look at it, we were fortunate from a budget perspective, everyone has come in at zero this year, the Cabinet's taking zero, teachers zero, administrators zero, custodians zero, the list goes on and on and on. So, everybody understands the really pernicious climate that we're in right now, financially speaking. But it also says that you hunker down, you maintain the contract by law, we went through arbitration, it is what it is. And so, those two pieces say, maintain the three Rs and attend to the law. If we need to cut, since we've cut, these two outer circles already last year, let me give you examples. We cut the kindergarten aid, the paraprofessionals. The Board, the parents, students, just about everybody said, the group we want to maintain, we want to keep teachers in front of kids. And everybody else is, terrible way of saying it, but everybody else is somewhat expendable. You'll see in some of the graphics we have later on, how much cutting we did, not talking about teachers. Eleo will walk us through one minute. We eliminated the kindergarten paraprofessionals. We now have 22 five-year-olds in front of one person, and one of the kids gets a bloody nose. Typically, the teacher or the para would take the young, took the nurse, while the other adult would stay in the classroom with the kids. Kids have other kinds of mishaps being little kids, what happens? If you have two teachers across the hall from each other, 22 and 22, you don't leave one teacher with 44 five-year-olds. So, they made that point to us, we recognized that, but we still chose to cut at that level. We want to keep teachers in front of kids. We also cut our gifted program, program for gifted students. We eliminated that, and instead, we replaced it with an after-school and weekend program. Which the good news with that is, we're getting good results, good feedback, rather from parents and from kids, but it's not the full-blown, robust program that blows it before. We cut our family consumer science program, the old home act from the middle school, we just eliminated it, it no longer exists. So, we've already made some tough cuts that we didn't want to make, but now we're saying, reading, writing, and math, stay within the law, and this last concentric circle is there are cuts to be made, this is where we'll be making them this year. And we have this as very important, so it's mission-critical, top priority, very important. And these other items are important and good to have. Those important, good to have things that we're going to chop. If we do have to cut, we're looking at ancillary programs, student support programs, we might look at social workers, psychologists, counselors, supplemental and extracurricular, we'll look at the arts, defined implied arts, we'll look at athletics, operational costs, we've cut back on textbooks, I'm sure you've heard that before, materials, equipment, no new computers, adult development, we've dramatically slashed the curriculum development, the professional development, all of our efforts, those have already been cut, but that's where we'll go for the next round of cuts if we do have to make them.
Thank you, Bill. Understanding the major cost drivers of next year's budget. Last year's fiscal appropriation award with the City Council through the Board of Education was $112 million. It was locked in at the '08-'09 year, so we were flat-funding for one year. A current fiscal year, we received a 1.8% increase for a total appropriation of $114 million. The first round of identifying cost drivers for next fiscal year, '11-'12. Health insurance. At this time, we estimate approximately a 12% renewal rate on healthcare. 12% is a total increase in value of $2.9 million. 2.9 million is a percentage of this year's 114, would require a 2.5% increase. So, health insurance exposure alone for the upcoming school year exceeds a total appropriation that was made between the fiscal years '09-, '10-, and '10-'11. ERA, which are the fiscal stabilization dollars, some were direct payments to the school district, other funds were funneled through the state of Connecticut. We anticipate losing approximately $800,000 in federal subsidy come June 30th of 2011. So, there will be a shift in burden. We retained jobs, jobs over the past two years, they are core mission jobs, but those jobs are simply not jobs or positions that we can cut from the school district, therefore, there will be a shift in burden of $800,000 to the general fund, accounting for approximately seven-tenths of a percentile point. Classroom staffing, based on guidance at all levels, would require an additional $600,000 and half a percentile point. Utilities, $400,000, three-tenths of a point. Teachers and administrators, we were very successful, we were successful, we had great success, excuse me, for next fiscal year on the arbitrated awards, where we have zero percent awards, greatly favors the management of the school districts. The $400,000, if you recall, was the agreement entered with the teachers and administrators, both by the Board of Education and passed by the Council, that would defer a certain percentage of their current year increase to next fiscal year. The current award was 3%, if you'll remember, recall, was split evenly, one and a half, one and a half. But the one and a half, the six-month intervals amounts to two and a quarter points. Yet, their salaries will be pegged at the full 3% come June 30th. So, the deferral was seven fifths of the, 75% of the basis point. Transportation, we have $300,000, which is tied to our contracted obligation with STA, bus service. And on the ERA jobs funds credit, we received approximately $1.3 million of additional federal subsidy, better known or best known as a jobs funds, for the current fiscal year and for next fiscal year. We saved a handful of jobs this current year. We added a few positions, FTE teaching positions, where they were needed due to classroom size enrollments. And we set aside $400,000 for next year to act as a credit against a total cost estimate. So, the static operating budget, in other words, an operating budget to take the current programs and roll forward to the new year, would require approximately $5 million or a 4.3% increase. As Dr. Sal mentioned earlier, we continue to, you know, make revisions, we will continue to make revisions to our budget. As we stand this evening, we're closer to 4% than last week's 4.3%.
Sal, you want, this was you on the cabinet.
What's there to do to reduce the 4.3, the cost drivers? One of the things, we're looking at cost containment, and I mentioned this to the Board before. We're having a problem with our transportation. Our enrollment's going up, our ridership is going up, and our equipment is staying static. We're having, and we have the magnet school program, we have students that are going across town, so the catching areas are changed, and we're having problems getting to schools on time. That's creating some issues with teachers, who are staying, you know, for a half hour or 40 minutes, and some contractual issues with that. We have the private broke school department, they're having some difficulties with the same kinds of things. So, the solution could be simple, you could get an added bus to it. Each bus is about $60,000, $65,000. You know, we really can't go there, quite frankly. So, what we're trying to do is look at our start times, they're telling me, you know, maybe if we increase the time between dismissal of our broken schools and public schools by about 10 minutes, we probably can get, you know, get sufficient time to get there, providing, you know, the parent fever in January, we've all had problems this year, but given, you know, the good conditions of us, it should make the rounds appropriately. So, we're looking at that. We're working with the City, as I mentioned, are looking at our administrative clause for benefits. Perhaps there's a better way of doing that, where we can both say. Technologically, I'm not sure, other than possibly using each other in some of our programming, but there's a study group that David has gotten to look at our program. Everybody says, if you look at it, can you really, you know, deliver it more to the efficiency? Well, we don't think so, we think we're efficient, but, you know, let some outside eyes look at it, of course, it's going to hurt. So, maybe if it's not people, maybe we can share technology in such a way, we can say, or have redundancies, instead of paying for it. So, we're looking at that. We're looking at, and this has come up at Board meetings recently, I think if, if all things being equal, can you put a, you know, textbook in each classroom? Is that doable? Yeah. You know, but is it what you can do, given the constraints that we have? So, we're moving towards things like classroom sets. We've spent a lot of money this past year, revised about 17 curriculums. How many are we doing this year? Well, you know, so that, the textbooks really are a supplement too, not in light of the curriculum. So, you know, does a kid need to take a bus home every day, carrying a backpack? I don't think so. But, you know, so we're looking at, how can we use our money better? And yet, make sure the youngsters have the support they need to have, if in fact, they need these materials, or if they don't have access to technology. You know, so we're looking at that. In fact, the group that came in with David was working with the Buffalo School System?
Syracuse.
Syracuse. They were spending $10 million or $12 million a year on tax costs, they went to a whole different system, but they're down to about $1 million, I guess, thereabouts. We've asked them to share that technology with us. You know, how's it working? Is it something we want, or can we do? So, I think we're kind of looking at so many things. You know, it's more than patsy potholes and police, and I get that. We've all got to provide that kind of stuff, but, you know, we're going to keep working, we heard the message, we know what's going on. Our dreams at Fullay Kindergarten here, that's not happening. We're having trouble offering support in kindergarten. And I invite anybody who wants to walk me, walk with me to those classrooms. You know, the kids are crying, they're tying their shoes, they got to go to the bathroom, they got to get this, they got half their kindergarten, the teachers about pulling their hair out, you know, it's tough. It's tough without those ages. And yet, we're lucky, and we've got some real dedicated educators that are doing the job. But we're really not growing, other than our own. We have in the budget, I think at this point, I want to say, six new staff members because of enrollment. There's, I believe, two, we're looking at the elementary, because of our bilingual situation, middle school and middle school are growing. I believe we have three scheduled for the middle school?
One at the sixth grade, one at the eighth grade, and possibly any other.
And what at the high school, though? Is it?
We have two placeholders right now.
So, you know, that's where we're at right now. And of course, the high school alone, students go through their, when they develop their schedules, will know better. Kindergarten, we don't know. When I talked to Dr. Dames, who was the Superintendent for the parochial schools, their enrollment is growing, which I find interesting, you know, so we're all growing in the Danbury area, so are the parochial schools. So, we have the demographer that's looked at our material, you know, those things, it's a 10-year study, but they're only, the first two or three years are the strongest, and we're already exceeding what they've said we could have in school this year. So, you know, it's coming to fruition, what they've said. We are growing, in fact, growing at a faster rate. So, we're trying to have early kindergarten registration, so we have a better handle on these things. We're working with our preschool programs, so that we can, you know, take a look at what we're doing, so that we can program correctly. I'll let anybody on the cabinet, if, I'm looking right here at Kim, she's working with, looking at possibly how we man our classroom with substitute teachers. Is there a more efficient, effective way of doing that? I think we're talking to Hamden and some other districts that have some services, services are using more money. But in fact, it may be more cost-effective overall, because in our system, if we can't put a teacher in a classroom, particularly at the middle and high school, we have to have something in the classroom, and we have not the money, we have to pay a teacher that we, when we purchase their planning period, it gets to be costly, if you have a teacher in the classroom. So, we're working on that front as well. Joyce has been working with our special needs program, she's now in charge of our reach rebound, to make sure that's a vibrant program that we're keeping youngsters in. I think Danbury does a remarkable job for years in keeping students home and not placing out. We've had some students place out. If you look at our budget, you'll see a discrepancy, and that's grown by, as I said today, 25% our placement, was there not about that placement? A lot of that is not attributed to our teachers, it's not working yet. These youngsters come in and are placed by DCF, and we have no alternative but to honor that placement. You know, we just can't do anything. And quite frankly, it is the best place for the youngsters, I think it's our job to support that, and we do. But some of those things are unanticipated in the budget, and we have to figure out how to pay for it as we go through here. But that's increased by 25%. So, we're doing, I think Danbury's been doing a good job in that area, so we can be responsible to the taxpayers. Some givens here, is that we know we have to be responsible to taxpayers, we have to be responsible to our children, and sensitive to the economic climate. I mean, it sounds like, you know, Apple buying, but it's true. We're all going there. It's nice to see that the economy's coming back, but it's not coming back in municipalities. They are affected much more by business, we understand that the money there is much more than it is in the industry now, from what I'm reading. Everybody had more jobs, we all have more jobs here, and they're making enough, by answering, we're adding some staff. No, we're going the other way. Bill has taken on more departments, Eleo has, I have, I have a personal director and a lawyer sitting next to me, we have a special ed, a big pair of our programs, we had full-time administrators before. Dr. Diluski left, she's taken part of this job, I am. Teachers are doing the same. So, we're in a different state than the business out there, but I think we're very, very sensitive to that. There's no question we're very sensitive to that. You want to run one, bro?
Our general fund revenue sources for current year will be a $114 million. City of Danbury, approximately costed local taxpayers about $91 billion per year of the $114. ECS, which is the Cation Cost Share formula, and our state reimbursements total approximately another $20 million. And for the current year, we have total federal subsidy of $3.2 million. Now, the $3.2 million, which is tied as an offset to the current ECS, well, the state legislature this year, this year, reduced on average 14% in education cost sharing to municipalities across the state of Connecticut. The reduced, or the reduction of 14% reduction was filled with a $3.2 million of federal subsidy. In theory, if we were to lose this $3.2 million, there are just only a couple of available options. One option is for the state of Connecticut to step back up to the plate and fund ECS at 100%. Or the ECS, or the state to pass the ECS burden down to the local municipalities, and more than likely, the municipalities would then hand it over to their local boards of education. So, in theory, a $3.2 million reduction would either be a cost share burden to municipalities and/or to the Board of Education, if the state Connecticut elects to choose not to fund it 100%. In terms of percentages on a dollar basis, local education cost the City of Danbury 80 cents on a dollar, subsidized with 17 cents per dollar in state reimbursements, and 3 cents per dollar in federal subsidies.
Just one point I want to make about ECS funding, is that, you know, given the timeframes that we're working under, it's going to be impossible, at least from our side, to know what the, the governor's not even going to propose a budget until the 16th of February. So, by that time, we have to be locked, we have to improve our budget. And that gives plenty of time along the latter parts of the process, if something does happen to ECS, and that's going to warrant the Council's consideration, what the final number is. to ECS, and that's gonna warrant the council's consideration, what the final number is. But that's something we really have no insight. It is a drive to keep it at least flat. I went to Hartford a couple of weeks ago, and there were several board chairs there really lobbying legislators hard the first day of the session, you know, to try and keep it flat. But the reality is, the state's facing a three billion dollar deficit, and so they're gonna have to cut somewhere. So the, the odds of it being flat are, is it fifty-fifty? Is it less? We don't know. But it'll be impossible for even to get a bearing until the governor comes up with what his budget is, in light of the fact that, so we're operating on your...
If, 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 if the one that they given is to make the assumption that the fourteen percent's gonna be funneled through to a municipality and to us, then that operating number that you saw in that slide from Elio would not be at five percent, it'd be about seven percent.
Correct.
Just only four, if in fact that comes a portion. But in conversations with the mayor, we're making the assumption based on the governor's proposition and proposal, that he's doing all that he can to keep ECS at the current level. That's our, that's our, and that's what they were advocating up there as well that day, and make sure they get so.
And that's just, it will be impossible to know what, what happens to the governor.
Yeah, absolutely, right.
Current year appropriation, one fourteen, total cost composition. Color bar stacked. Pay, uh, specific attention, mainly to the bottom two bars. The bottom bar represents total salaries. Salaries of about approximately sixty-eight million dollars representing sixty cents on a dollar, and benefits of twenty percent representing twenty-two million dollars. So between salaries and benefits, we expend approximately eighty to eighty-one cents per dollar. Uh, the remaining twen- nineteen to twenty percentile points are also tied to contractual services, uh, rent obligation, lease obligation. We have, set aside for equipment leases and the like. When we get to the very top of the stacked bar, we find our discretionary funds, although I care not to label them as such, because at what time, our instructional supplies and textbooks are discretionary, but collectively, they represent approximately a nickel on a dollar. So going back to Dr. Glass's earlier subject circle, it's like, as we begin to strip away the outer layers, where we're stripping from or of, are the discretionary funds, which amount to possibly five percent of the total budget appropriation. We know the Danbury School District is efficient. It's not that we think or believe, we know that we are efficient. When we look at the per pupil expenses over the past three fiscal periods, dating back in oh-six, oh-seven, Danbury's per pupil expense totaled ten thousand seven hundred dollars. Compared to our partners within our district reference group, we are DIRK H. In oh-six, oh-seven, our partners on average expended eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. The state average expenditure was eleven five. In fiscal year seven, eight, we spent eleven two. Our partners spent twelve three on average, the state twelve one. In fiscal year oh-eight, oh-nine, our per pupil was eleven seven. Our partners on average spent thirteen thousand, while the state spent twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. So from oh-six through fiscal year end two thousand and nine, we were well below not only the state average on per pupil expenses, but as well as within our DIRK category. Terms of percentages, we'll lock in the state at a hundred percent value and compare the DIRK and Danbury to the state average. In oh-six, oh-seven, at a time period, the state, the state spent a dollar on education. Danbury Public Schools spent ninety-three cents against the state dollar. Our partners exceeded the state average by three percentile points. We were ten points below our partners on average. In the mid-year, seven oh-eight, again, the state is fixed at one hundred percent, representing a dollar basis. The DIRK again exceeded the state average by one percentile point, and we trailed our partners by nine percentile points, spending only ninety-two cents compared to a dollar on average for the state of Connecticut. In oh-eight, oh-nine, ninety-one, eleven percentile points below the DIRK group, nine percentile points below the state average. Three-year trend, we went from ninety-three cents on a dollar to ninety-two, down to ninety-one. The DIRKs showed some improvements in the mid-year, but pretty much leveled over the three years. And the state was again fixed at one hundred percent. Uh, Bill, can we go back to that slide? Just one other point I really would like to, to stress here. For some of our DIRK partners and for the state average, on an earlier slide, where we had the cost composition, the cost composition for the local taxpayer, Danbury taxpayer, amounts to approximately eighty cents on a dollar. When we're considering, or you're considering, expending an additional dollar, that marginal dollar on education, the total burden to the local taxpayer is eighty cents on a dollar. For many other communities, given their very high education cost share receipts, it may very cost, well, cost that marginal dollar only thirty cents. So go ahead, spend that extra dollar, because on the local tax base, it's only amounts of thirty cents. Here in Danbury, for the marginal dollar, it amounts on average to eighty cents of, of refunding. To identify full-time equivalent loss for the fiscal year period two thousand nine through the end of two thousand and eleven, in two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, we reduced teaching positions by approximately twenty-two FTEs. For the current fiscal year, we cut an additional twelve and a half, for a cumulative loss of thirty-four to thirty-five positions. As a group, we cut teachers' positions by four percent. Our paraprofessionals, four and a half positions two years ago, current year, we reduced thirteen. Bill shared earlier the paraprofessionals as we moved them from our kindergarten classes across the district. Cumulative seventeen and a half position, or a two-year loss of twelve percent. Administrators, three point two, this year, three point four, six point six combined, fourteen percent reduction through district administrators. The superintendent's cabinet, we had a cost year two years ago, away from the general fund to a grant source. For the current year, we reduced half a position. Cumulative effect is one percent. We're only five to begin with, we're down to four, twenty percent reduction. Secretaries, combined, two years, three, four percent reduction to the workforce. Custodians, we lost five percent, total four FTEs. Nurses, two over the two-year period, a nine percent reduction to the workforce. Two years ago, we shed approximately thirty-three positions. Current year, thirty-six positions. We reduced the total workforce by approximately sixty-nine positions over the span of twenty-four months. Bill, thanks.
Can we go back to what Elio said over here? Um, administrators and cabinet, which is just a different kind of administrator, these are the senior-level administrators. Actually, the cabinet is comprised of Joyce, Kim, Sal, Elio, and myself. So, uh, twenty percent cut represents not replacing the assistant superintendent, and the administrative cuts of fourteen percent. You can see how we, although we did cut a larger number of teachers, percentage-wise, we barely touched them compared to the administrative staff. Here's another way of looking at that. It's hard to see, but four years ago, in two thousand and seven, we had fifty-two administrators throughout the district for nine thousand eight hundred students. Fifty-two for nine thousand eight hundred four kids. As Sal said, we've been growing. In two thousand and ten, we have thirty-eight administrators for ten thousand four hundred kids. So each of these spots that you see is vacancies, those are the people that we've cut. Um, let me just randomly pick one. This person right here can be, could be identified as Sue Rice. Sue is our technology director. Um, we have chosen not to replace her at this point in time. Um, as Sal mentioned, I've assumed full responsibility for technology. We have multiple, multi-multi-million-dollar installation, technologically speaking, and it should merit having a full-time person there, but we've went with the prevailing thought that it's appropriate to cut at the administrative level before we cut at any other level. I, this is a good opportunity for me to say thank you to David. He's been nothing less than terrific working with. We're trying to find ways of economizing, as Sal mentioned earlier. Lending services, can we combine our IT departments, the cities versus the board of ed? We've had some wonderful conversations, David. Has really done a great job of leading that. Um, we've brought an outside team to help us get smarter on this. We don't know if we can have a cost savings, but we're, we're trying to do everything we can in terms of turning over every single rock. The biggest point here, I think, is you can see where those vacancies are. We have cut dramatically to the administrative ranks. Some of these bodies represent principals. It's, by law, you must have an elementary, you must have a principal. So that's, we have thirteen elementary schools, that's thirteen principals. Thirteen of those, those shaded areas are represented by the pieces that we just have to have by law, and there's only one of them at every elementary school. As significant as these cuts are, the next slide is even more dramatic. Pop back for a second. When you see this four percent cut at teach, with teachers, and the cumulative thirty-four point seven, if you look at this slide, this represents the reading and math specialists. These are teacher-level positions that were represented in the earlier slide that Elio did. These are cuts within the past three years. Uh, these folks provide direct classroom support, and if you remember that bullseye, reading, writing, and math, for us, if you don't have that, you don't have a school system. Two thousand eight, thirty-eight specialists for roughly, um, four thousand nine hundred students. Two years later, nineteen point five, down from thirty-eight, and we've gone from four thousand nine hundred to five thousand two hundred. So you can see how much we've devastated the ranks of those specialists. They're teacher-level positions, but they're not teachers in classrooms. They're teachers who work with kids in classrooms with direct service. Sometimes you walk into our schools, you'll see them in the hallway with small groups of kids. They're all certified staff members. So between these two slides, if you look where we've cut, the argument was, well, we think you guys are below you. And we, meaning the community at large. Well, we can make a compelling argument to think, but if we even went with that in two thousand and seven, with fifty-two, it's very hard to make that argument now. There's thirty-eight, and we also have Sue Rice's position on the line, and there is another position down here that we're studying that we may not fill as well. So that thirty-eight may drop, in fact, to thirty-six. Same thing here, how much we've devastated this group of, of educators. Very quick with this one. Our class sizes, we staff at the kindergarten through first grade at twenty-two. What does that mean? That means we have one teacher for twenty-two kindergarten students. Couple of years ago, at kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, it was one teacher for twenty students. We made the decision a year ago to take second grade and move it from twenty students up to twenty-five students, and to take kindergarten one and move them from twenty to twenty-two. When you heard Sal mention we have placeholder for two teachers next year at the elementary level, we don't know what we're gonna get in terms of kindergarten. A lot of folks have said we can't afford, uh, the non-public education tuition anymore. We're bringing our kids back. We've seen an increase in kindergarten enrollments, so we have this tenth of a placeholder. If we don't need it, we won't use it. We're gonna remain at twenty-two kids for kindergarten to first grade. It's not popular with parents, but it's the number we think we can justify in terms of being fiscally and educationally responsible. We'll stay at twenty-five. We do have classes of twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight right now, and our principal has said, we'll just deal with it. At the sixth through eighth grade level, and the nine through twelve, teachers teach five periods a day, a different group of youngsters each period, twenty-five kids per group for a total of one hundred twenty-five. We have a few, um, groups that are at one hundred twenty-six, one hundred twenty-seven. That's reasonable, we think. Folks don't necessarily appreciate it, but we think, again, it's fiscally responsible. So bottom line with this slide is, this is where, uh, we're looking right now in terms of volatility, and we may have some increase over here. Very quickly on this one, this, we've had exponential growth in just the three-year period, and we've cut all the specialists. Two thousand, um, eight, roughly nine, ninety-nine hundred. Two thousand nine, roughly ten thousand one hundred. Two thousand ten, roughly ten thousand three hundred. You can see how dramatic the, the increase is. This is very unique for a school system, especially when other school systems are going down. We, in fact, are at, are reflecting the opposite pattern. Bottom line with our demographics, and we've had a professional demographer, Dr. Peter Proud, who was employed for many years by the state, and retired and independent, as an independent. K five should remain at approximately fifty-two hundred kids. However, uh, this is two hundred fifty-eight students, or a five percent increase over the enrollment projection by the external demographer. So we have already exceeded by five percent what the projections of the demographer we indicate, have indicated. When we say projections, these are based on things such as live births. We count the number of kids who are born, and then we just move them forward five years as kindergartners. Uh, six to eight middle schools were increased by seventy students. Doesn't sound like too much, but recognize the fact that both our middle schools are about eleven hundred, and both are overcrowded right now. And nine through twelve should stay at about twenty-nine hundred students. At the same time, and you've heard Sal talk about this before, if you look at last year, two thousand nine, twenty-nine point four percent of our kids lived at or below the poverty level, as identified by students being eligible for free reduced lunch. This year, we've had a dramatic spike up to forty-six percent. What that means is, as our population is growing, it's becoming poorer at the same time. Um, if you saw the article that the historyologist wrote about poverty, the research is pretty definitive, the higher the poverty level, lower the test scores. Why? Because these youngsters don't have the same opportunity for enrichment activities that many other kids have from more affluent communities. Another way of saying this, when we look at kindergarten, is that kids from low socioeconomic means, kids who live at, at or below the poverty level, come to school with about three thousand words in their vocabulary as first-day kindergarten students. Kids who live at middle-of-the-road income levels, modern income, come to school the same day with five thousand more vocabularies, and kids who are affluent come on average with seven to nine thousand, as high as twelve thousand words. So the first day of the first year of a student's academic career, there's a gap between three thousand to five thousand to nine thousand words on average, and it's determined by the poverty level. And you can see, over that four-year period, our, our trend line definitely is upward at the income. To make the challenge a little bit greater, um, because we felt that we're under-challenged, so we wanted to stir the pot a little bit. Um, this one is particularly vexing. Thirty-nine percent, roughly forty percent of our kids will move in and out of our schools annually, uh, meaning, if you look at the yellow ocher color of the pie, there's stability here. These are kids, roughly sixty percent of our kids, come to a school and they stay at that school. So if they start at Shelter Rock in September, they leave Shelter Rock, or they stay at Shelter Rock in June, and they move on to the next grade at Shelter Rock in September. However, close to forty percent of our kids move either within the school system in any given year, or inside and out, meaning, we'll get some youngsters leaving Danbury and going to Waterbury. Meanwhile, some kids are coming from Longittuck into Danbury. Or, the youngsters start at Shelter Rock, may move to South Street, may move to Morris Street, may move to Park Avenue, may move to Great Clane. We have had kids who have actually moved five schools in one year. That is particularly challenging for teachers when they have kids coming in and leaving as moving targets. What we've done to address this, we've stabilized our curriculum across the district by grade level. We've paced it out, so if you were in one school in September and October, when you go to another school for maybe November, December, you're not gonna have a repeat of what you just had two in the month, for the past two months. So all teachers at all grade levels are moving along at a very specific continuum. Sal?
This is a recap, and I, I think it's pretty self-centered. Um, I just hope it's sound clear. This is a big thing for us right here, thinking class size. I think they're too large. The board thinks they're too large. Uh, we're, we're struggling to keep them, keeping them at that level. This year, we, we were fortunate with a job, one we were able to add plus. What you may hear as a council member is, how come this school has this and that? Well, that happens. If you have three sections or four sections at one school, you, you, you tend to spread them out. If you only have two, then guess what? If you have three or four extra, they'll stay within that catch area, and so you might have twenty-seven and twenty-four, where you, in another school, you divide by three. So that does happen. You do have some inconsistency. But generally speaking, we try across the city to have that, because that, that's a big impact, particularly at K one and two, um, to keep them at that level. Uh, and my worry is to move to, and I said it last year, to a city kind of a program, we need to run a thirty-year class. That is actually, I think absurd, and it's, it's not gonna serve our student's well at all. It will wind up costing us more money, especially with students and others that will look for other venues to support what they're doing. It will not, not be a good, good program for us. Um, and here, we have to work on the achievement gap. You could read the other ones there, but we're on the bubble with the state, the closed gaps. Um, the stuff that we see going on in the schools is just tremendous. Um, the professional level of the teachers, the conversation that the, uh, the administrators are having with their teachers about youngsters, it really is pretty powerful stuff. We have to continue doing that. But here we go, Seth. If a youngster comes in with three thousand, so our poverty level's going up, they come in with three thousand in terms of vocabulary, middle of income of five and possibly twelve, every year grows. Every year, it grows exponentially. We need to go out, and we have a school bus now. They were turning into a literacy van. They were going out in the community to try to work with parents on this. We need to engage, we call the parents into a program where the kids are exposed to the greatest skill where they're able to look at and understand literature and concepts based on their life. Right now, they're very narrow-minded. In fact, Bill told me two weeks ago, some principals are complaining, telling me some kids aren't there certainly. Correct? Which is, you know, it's hard for us to think about that. How does that happen? We get youngsters in our school system that, yes, they're, you know, it helps with our mosaic in terms of our backup, but they've never been at school. Those that have been at school, it's an easier transition. So we have this great gap. So we're working on keeping class sizes at the lowest we can and then also focusing on the achievement gaps and maintaining the safety of the community environment. And we thank the city for this, right? The buildings are not owned by the schools. They're owned by the city. And, you know, a big part of the line share, the responsibility falls on them. I think we do a great job with what we have. And those of you who have been in high schools that have 3,100 kids and have middle schools with 11,000 to 1,200, I think ours are pretty ordinary with the folks that we have. We've got pretty much respect for students, but, you know, they do challenges, no question. So we need to be vigilant, be present, and I think we do that well. You want to end with this one?
It just comes back, and then I think Irving had a slide as well, talking about upcoming meetings as well. If you go back to Elliot's slide, per pupil expenditure, Danbury is that yellow ochre and the darker salmon color. Those are the, thanks Sal, those are the districts like us. That's a Stanford, that's a Norwalk, there are other small cities. We're not making any complaints whatsoever. As a matter of fact, we think we have bragging rights that we're spending less. But you can only have bragging rights if your performance is equal. We, on average, outperform the entire district reference. I think there are 14 districts within our area. If council remembers, last year, we had a slide that showed 3rd grade, 4th grade, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th grade, reading, writing, math. Every test score, every grade level was up. And this year, for our ELL, English Language Learners in mathematics, which is probably our toughest population, our ELL kids, because they just don't have the language yet to understand the instruction, we not only were at the top of our DIR, we scored almost in the middle of the next DIR higher. So our performance is way up comparatively to districts like us. But when we have things like this poverty level growing, we're really getting very concerned about that because our principals rank and file. And Sal mentioned, I don't know if it really sunk in or not, walked into a classroom with a principal, and she said, watch this. And she walked over to this little boy. This goes back to about October. And she said, what is your name? And the young man said, James. And she said, what's your full name? And he goes, James. Went over to another youngster and said, what is your name? Joe. What's your full name? Joe Cabo. So some of the kids did not even know their full name, much less their colors, their numbers, their letters, while other kindergarteners are actually writing. Kindergarten-style, but they're still writing. So our concern between that and this mobility rate is really going back to this mission-critical thing. At least the three Rs. We have to stay in compliance with state law, state and federal law, that second circle. And then the last circle out, if we have to cut, and we recognize, as Sal said, the good fiscal stewards, if we have to cut, we're talking about that particular area where the cuts were coming from.
So just, we use this in another setting, but just to keep people informed of where we are. And I won't go over the dates again. But I think I mentioned at the outset where we are in the process. We're going to be taking, we're going to be presenting the budget at our next board meeting, and then we're going to be voting on it on February 2nd. And at that point, it goes to the mayor. He's going to have to weigh various requests by all of the city departments. He's going to make his presentation. And then we'll have discussions with you again in the month of, I guess, April, after the mayor proposes his budget. And then the final resolution, we'll have to come back to the board at some point, as it has the last several years, once we have a final number. Because at that point, the state numbers will probably be more simplified and we'll have a better idea of where we're going to come in. And then we'll have some more discussions at that point. One thing I wanted to mention, the kind of undertone to this, is that some of the actions that we've been able to take over the last several years to point the impact we've seen, the reductions that we've taken over the past couple of years, but we really didn't show, you know, what they could have been if not for several one-time items. Some aggressive negotiating on the part of Elliot and the finance team. But some really one-timers that really aren't available to us anymore. And we did offer early retirement a couple of years ago, and that kind of prevented a wave of layoffs we would have had if we'd taken them. So you see the number of FTEs being reduced. I don't think that reduced it any or very few actual layoffs just because of the early retirement program. And that was kind of a one-timer. The federal monies that were passed a year or two ago are another one-timer. It's running out, and it's not likely to come back. And then you look back even two, three years ago, where we renegotiated our bus contract, our health insurance contract, we changed providers, and that sort of thing. I think even copiers, we even kind of renegotiated that. I think everywhere outside the classroom where we can minimize the administrative costs we have. And so I think a lot of those, we're continuing to undertake those efforts. But I think we're seeing, as this downturn has performed itself, even the fact that we deferred a point and a half of salary is something most municipalities would say, all right, the economy has to get better. It's a cycle. But as it draws on two, three, four years, even these maneuvers are not, are going to catch up to this. And I think we're seeing that going into next year. I think the availability, unless something happens that is unexpected, these one-timers really aren't going to reappear themselves. And so what I'm seeing is a lot of other districts that really haven't either been as aggressive or haven't undertaken them. They've already made many more significant cuts in the last year or two that we've had to take. And even though what we've taken is painful, I've heard stories of other, I was just up in Hartford a couple of weeks ago. There are districts that have curtailed athletics, music, and arts, all the things that we've talked about. I think we've been able to defer those actions a year or two just from some of the fiscal management we've undertaken here. But, you know, that time might run out, depending on where we shake out. And so I don't want to leave everyone in a daze. And we're continuing to find every possible avenue that we can before we hit services that we would like. That's the best we can do. I guess what I'd like to do is, to open the discussion, I first want to open it up to board members who'd like to comment or ask questions. And then we can open it up to city council and so on and have a free discussion. So I first wanted, with Mr. Janelle, who's the chair of our finance.
I also want to mention to pick up and add to what Eric says. In terms of board, any administration, we, I like to think that we're thinking outside the box and a little bit more creative thinking. This is what we've done a couple, three weeks ago. We've met with Representative Guyhood Cabersack and Senator Blaklin. We had a meeting with them, asking them, meeting with them, to go back to Hartford and ask the legislation not to impose any more unfunded mandates on schools if they're coming down, to hold off anything that was in the pipe that may cost us substantial monies. In this particular economic climate, nobody can afford anything further that isn't financed to us. The other thing, in terms of the slides that were presented, I'm not 100% sure if a certain calculation was taken in, but the population of the Danbury school system has grown. We're unique. I think we're one of five districts out of about 80 in Connecticut that have grown, and the others have grown and grown by a couple, three students, not to the extent we have. But our middle schools are all bulging, and the influx going from the elementary into middle schools is going to present a challenge to put a light in. The west side of Danbury just recently had good fortune of having a contractor take over a facility, a facility, the Rivington, a facility that was bankrupt, and the Toll Brothers came in. They are aggressively looking to move and to build some 1,800 units, some of which are going to be senior citizens. With these 1,800 units, this is going to put a, I'm assuming there are going to be students in and on seniors, but that's going to put an additional strain on the Mill Ridge School and the Parkland King Street School. I'm not sure if that's been factored into these numbers. So again, although the city reaps the benefit of some more property taxes, we've got more of an educational course coming in. So that is very, very concerned for us. The population growth is extremely critical for us in terms of the body, the number of students we have moving into the middle schools and then eventually into the high schools. We've also have done something different this year. We've been outside and met with the community at large, principally business people, religious people, et cetera. And we called it an adopt-a-school program. We've been very fortunate so far to have over $40,000 given to us in terms of resources. 17,000 or 18,000 was in form of cash from the food service company and another 18,000 or 20,000 value on a particular bus that Sal was talking about relative to literacy. We also have a list in there of services. Over the summer, Sal and Bill reached out to the principals and asked them, what does your school need? So we have a list in there so that we can go to the business communities and say, hey, can you provide us, as Sal started the early meeting, can you provide us with perhaps some instructional training on some of our technology here? Can you come in and help our students with maybe an internship? Can you offer us whatever you can offer us, whether it be in-kind services or, and/or financial services? So we are looking at every avenue to help mitigate the financial crisis. But also, part of the adopt-a-school program was also a benefit to have the community as a whole be more involved with the educational process. So we are moving in a lot of different directions to squeeze the dollar and to make it more, you know, more effective and more efficient for us. That's all.
Any board members like to comment on questions?
I'd just like to, number one, make a comment. I think it was very important in our negotiations that the mayor did present this in his case. I think for us to have tried to have done it, you know, what do you expect from this? I think that played a very, very important part. And, you know, in the future, that is something that the negotiations have proven us to contain. But I felt that, being on the negotiating team, I thought that was a must. Because if we did it, they could say, what do you expect I'm to say? Type of thing. Okay? That was an example where I thought this was a real plus. The other thing is, on cost containment, I'm going to ask the council people here. We do have a program on, you know, solar panels on a few of the school's rooms and with the CLMP and the State Energy Commission and so forth. Program coming before the council. And being on the, I was on the side of the committee. I'm not on any one. But I feel like this was very, very important. I wasn't trying to, I feel it's very, very important because we can work on cost containment. You know, if the dollars aren't there, that's kind of, you know, we can't print, you know? We're not the federal government. But on things like cost containment, whether it's that energy program or like, the city can do the same thing. I saw Ridgefield recently did something on their recreation center or something like that. But the thing is, I think that is an area that we can work on for everybody. You know, where can we cut down the cost? Type of thing. And I hope, you know, I hope there's more interaction between us. And I can be honest with you, I hope the city does support the energy conservation. We think we can save about a quarter million a year on that one. I mean, you know, I'm, you know, you're the man with the figures. Am I right on that? Or, you know, and, you know, what you don't spend, you know, maybe you can shift it somewhere else.
I think it's counseling that sometimes, you know, people pulling on their shirt tails in different ways. And let me say, if this is a little honest, if there's a question or a concern or an issue, just give me a call, any of the cabinets. You know, last year, we talked about schools and teachers. A lot of things did happen. And we honestly listen to folks and we try to be mindful and careful. Ultimately, as it comes, my decision to advocate for the youngsters and the board to make a decision. But we did listen, and we do care. So if you hear things that don't seem to be right or some oddities, you know, let me know, and I'll, of course, get back to you and let you, you know, try to explain it till you find out what the answer is. We are not close to the youth schools this year. We did that last year. There's rumors out there about ACE. I think ACE, there's a special population. Quite frankly, it's a viable program. If you didn't have it, it'd be very frosty in other manners, otherwise. So that program's not going anywhere. Our middle schools are growing. You saw the number up there of 70. What that means at the middle school is that we have to call split teams. And then for certification reasons, you can't teach three years. You don't have a math, language arts, or social studies teacher. So you have to put another team together. You know, things happen. So if you hear, oh, why is the STEM Academy getting in? Well, there's some good reasons, though. You know, we did that to keep our enrollment, you know, at a reasonable level at one school. And it is a special program, you know, and it's gotten criticism. But we've tried to be fair in staffing. They've had some less staffing than us. So, but if you hear things, you know, just let me know. I think it's important. Thing about textbooks, you may be hearing about that. I think it's true. You know, we didn't, we have, how much in for textbooks?
About 250.
And sometimes a request can be how much?
A million, too.
A million, too. I mean, you know, so you obviously can't do all that, but you try to find other venues to do it. We have a multi-text approach, or we have class sets. We have other things that we have to do. So, but if you hear things and you need some kind of, you need information, prepare to, try to respond. You may not agree with it, but at least I can tell you what the truth is. You know, you can get it from the horse as well. With that, please.
Well, I'd like to, on behalf of the council, we do appreciate all of your efforts. We've always appreciated the efforts that you've made in these past years as members have served continually on the council. We see what you do, we know what you're trying to do. We appreciate you listening to our input and involving us in the process. And we, you know, envy the job you have. And I'm sure you know always envy the job we have. It's a tough year. You know, the other night, we met as a group at the Greek Orthodox Church on the side of Bridge. And there was a gentleman in the audience who said something about, well, you know, we keep getting hit for these fees, you know, for the PK organizations. And why don't we just raise the taxes enough to cover that? And I sat in the room, and I thought, you know, I think that's probably the least thing I hear whenever I go door-to-door. In fact, it's completely the opposite. I go to door to door. In fact, it's completely the opposite, and it probably only falls in second to, hey, why don't you put a cell tower in my neighborhood? It's, uh, you know, it's very difficult here for us. You know, we're on both sides of this. And, you know, we, we hear you and we understand and, and we appreciate the job you do in trying to educate the youth in our community. And I don't think that we don't. It's just, it's, it's difficult. We face difficult challenges on the other side as well. So, thank you. And thank you for involving us in the process.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments, Mr. James?
Question to me. I also have a comment. I do appreciate these workshops. Cause for me personally, the more I could know what the number, the more deeper, better, I'm more educated, I can make a better decision on budget time. But last year, when we had these workshops, one of the things that we did request is that if we can get a budget scenario where it would be a 0% increase, 2% increase, and a 5%, this way we can see the impacts. If we do have to reduce your figure down, at least we'll know what that impact would be. So, whether or not, so we consider, but then we need to actually request it. If we do, we know what that would be in dollars.
Well, I, I recommend that we're not doing this year. And let me tell you what, we did last year. It created such a morale problem in this district. It was, it was devastating. And I, we had people wondering and applying for jobs and, um, it was really hard. So we've asked, that's going to come for a few minutes in that. But what we're trying to say is that we have cut so far in the budget, if we were to receive the zero, I mean, just, you know, just think about the zero, class sizes all be up to 25. Your half-day kindergartens, uh, we all have that. We had a series of recommendations of what we're going to do. Then we'll go back to those recommendations and scenarios and revisit them and, and see which ones that we would have the, you know, we would choose. So rather than to say, well, this is what we're going to do if, it's, uh, this is what we need with the concept that I'm saying to the board later, is it not to slide back. We're not sliding back. If we were to be reduced to 2 million or 3 million, uh, it's going to be programs for students. It's going to be staffing. It's going to be the core area deals talking about. Uh, and to put that out there, uh, you know, it just really creates issues and problems. So we decided that would not be a good thing. You want to talk to me one-on-one and go over those with you? I'm willing to. You know, and, and say, here's the kind of thing. That's okay. But we just didn't want to start those scenarios, uh, again, because of the, of what it created. And I appreciate why you made it, but it just, um, it just was not a, it did not help our education or resources.
We've, on to Sal's point, last year, we had a number of our folks bailing out on us. When word came out, they were looking at cutting in certain areas, and they literally left the district. Um, and some of the folks that have left and some of the folks that are still leaving are some of our very best people. And they're very marketable even in a tough economy. So the idea of putting that out there shakes them up. The way we've been looking at, this is, this is overly dramatic. And so I want to put that out first. But when you've cut back to below the, the heart of the district, we're starting to say things like, well, as human beings, we want to lose our heart or we want to lose our eyes. Which one are we willing, which organ are you willing to give up? So, well, if you give up your heart, you're dead. So, yeah, remove my eyes. As crazy as that is, it played out in things like, we have football, we have baseball, we have basketball, and we have reading, and we have writing, and we have math. We have to give up one side or the other. What do you give up? In an urban district especially, you give up athletics. A lot of our kids come in large part, that's the driver that keeps them coming to us. It's the, the door that opens up higher end for many kids, which you cut out reading, writing, and math in lieu of those other things. So by putting that stuff out, it becomes, as I said, it's so dramatic that people, we get, we get people coming to us trying to convince us to go down to CU. Will you come with us? We help organize a group of parents to come down to the council. And we keep saying, they're us and we're them. And David was over here meeting with us, and we were over at David's place meeting. And we're saying, it's just all of us in a horrible, horrible economic climate. So the idea of saying that graphic with the concentric circles, that's pretty much what we're saying. If we have to cut, we've said, you know, all of us have said, that top circle, those co-curricular programs, those adult growth and development programs, the materials, that Sal mentioned, Syracuse, have 10 million. They have 25,000 kids, we have 10,000. They have a $10 million textbook budget, we have 250,000. So we told them, we'd be more than happy to take 2 million from them, and they still have way more than we would. Um, and they're trying to find ways of economizing. So we're just trying to, we're just trying to be professionally responsible to the community and not pit folks against you who we turn around and say, no, they're working down. Your point, Joe. You know, we don't want to sit in your shoes many times, and you know, you don't want to sit in our shoes many times. So it's the same pair of shoes, basically. So we're, we're trying to keep a lid on it then, so we don't get people riled up and scared.
The other, the other point I would make is that because of the large number of unknowns that we currently have, we mentioned some of those before. Some of them are internal and some of them are external. When we talk about the gasoline and the fuel rates, we talk about utilities, insurance rates, we're projecting those items at a certain amount. Those are significant increases. Through negotiation and whatnot, those may go up, they may go down. At this point, to put a scenario across when you have an item, items such as those that can swing hundreds of thousands of dollars either way, and then we put out, well, we can cut this or we can cut that. To, to Bill's point and others, we can stoke a whole exodus or, or a lot of panic when we come back at the end and say, well, we found the $500,000, let's reinstate this. If we, as opposed to looking at this more detail as we get closer, um, you know, we're going to pass our budget with many unknowns. By the time the council is going to deliberate on the budget, you know, the mayor would have put together, here's what the revenue projections are for the city, here's what the city can afford, and here's roughly, and that number's going to be, and by that time, a lot of these other unknowns will be clear. How much will the state give in ACS? I think that may not be final, but we'll have a much clearer direction on that as well. And so at that point, we can say, when we come to you again, okay, we have a much clearer understanding of what the final target will be. What will the impact of that be versus what we've passed? What changes would we have to make given a much more concrete number than we have right now in February, in January? And I think that at that point, it will at least result in a lot less back and forth and scaring people only to come back and say, oh, we've saved you. Or people who think they're safe and all of a sudden we say, no, we have to figure this. And I think we can avoid some of that. It's going to have to happen eventually, but I think we should have that discussion with much more clearer information than we have at this point.
On both sides, we have the clear information.
When you do propose the final, the budget that you propose, can you break it down in a way for your, to the model you presented, you know, for your core? How much is the core? And then go out, so not, so in total, we would know how much of the pie that we could do budget? How much is reading, math, and which one would come? How much of those programs that equal that core? And then you go out, how much is that? So we'll know how much of the pie, how much of the cost.
If you're looking directly at me, Ben, but this is a, a conversation at the cabinet level that, that we have all the time. And Sal's been very clear with us, you know, we'll do scenario planning. Eliot, you crunch the numbers, will you do the instructional impact? Kim, you do the staffing impact. Joyce, you do the support impact. And then we come back and make recommendations. And, you know, we're trying to do as good a job as possible, hopefully to illustrate to you the process we've gone through and what we've already done in terms of cuts. And then, you know, eventually we'll get down to a numbers game. And as Irving said, you know, we've been accused at times of, you guys have, you know, rabbit and hat. You, you've been holding it. You can see that, there is no hat. We've gotten rid of the rabbit, we've gotten rid of the hat. But we constantly keep working with David. We're trying to find a way of combining IT services that we could save who knows what, if we can save anything. So we will, as, as the short answer, but in the, the process right now that we're going through, Ben, it's just going to take us some time to really play all these horrible scenarios out and then take the least devastating one that recommended to the board. This is what we're thinking. And they may turn around and say, as they did in the past, nope, we don't like that option. Go back to the drawing board and figure it out.
The, the, the meeting that Joe had mentioned that we were at, everybody gave the presentation to break Orthodox Church a week or two ago, was really a phenomenal meeting. The, the population of people there, maybe 50, 60 people, really left that meeting knowing that it was the united front, that it wasn't a border edge problem, it wasn't a city council problem, it wasn't the mayor's problem, although he's got the hurt on his shoulder, but that everybody there, including the parents, has a stake and a piece of, of this particular problem to work together and resolve. So I was very happy that that was the final outcome of that meeting, because having the public understand and perceive that there is a unity, you know, it's good. It's that we are working together for the common cause. It's not us against you and vice versa. So that was a, a, I think, a terrific and beneficial outcome as a result of that meeting. It was good. And the presentations I've been giving. I think it was very clear on all sides. Joe made it very clear what the council's role were, was, or is. And, and the administration presented pretty much similar numbers here. And I, the public had an understanding and a time to digest what the implications are. And also, that circle was very descriptive as to, this pretty much is where it's going to be cut. What's in there, you know, is something else. But, uh, it was very informative from a unity point of view. And I was very, very happy with it.
Further discussion, questions?
The same thing.
I want to make sure these board members know that the school and the city is working together on any areas that we can find common ground. We've had a good lesson very mid-point several times. And we're working together on IT. We're working together on other areas for purchasing. It, it's, it's really, the door is wide open. And it's not just in those areas. Where everyone can find common ground. We're asking each other questions on, you know, things such as paper. You know, they, they buy from a different vendor than we buy, but they buy a much higher volume than we buy. I mean, it's, it's, things as simple as that. Uh, and, and the door is wide open. And our minds are, more importantly, our minds are wide open to ensure that we're doing the best job that we possibly can for the sake of the taxpayers, so we're not cutting into our core services. Now, the core services are much different than the core services on the city side, but the goal is still the same. And, and hopefully, you know, the pot is limited. We all know that, you know, the taxpayer's dollar is very precious and, and there's a very limited amount of that. And we're trying to strive towards making sure that the priorities are straight and trying to figure out new ways of, of trying to satisfy, you know, the delivery of those services without harming the quality of those services. So, but I appreciate all the, you know, the, the advice and, you know, I've learned a lot by working with these guys. And I think, you know, I think we can make great strides towards achieving the same goal. And, you know, we do have a large gap to close. The money, the money stream is not growing. We all know that. We all know, you know, what we're up against. And, but we all have the commitment. And I, I think we can, we can close that gap to, to a point where it's something that hopefully the taxpayers, I, I know they're committed to the education, they're committed to the quality, you know, place boards that we have and all the other, all the services that the city provides. So, um, we just have to make sure that we're able to provide them, provide them the services that they're afford to cost.
Any further comments, discussion, or small add?
I would just like to bring the conversation back to the overcrowding. And I wondered if we could somehow work together to get our building committee back up and running to look at spaces for kids. Because even if we do get a miracle windfall and we're able to hire 15 more teachers, where are we going to put them? There, there just is no room, especially at the two middle schools, which are, I, I think dangerously overcrowded. So if we could ask the mayor through Mr. Cabo to...
We certainly could do that. I mean, if you're talking about building, if there are middle schools right now...
No, no, no. I, I know that that's not even on the realm of possibility, but looking for spaces within the city that we could make another STEM program, that we could do another, you know, small satellite program.
Mr. James, just follow up on, on our comment. If we do get those 235 new students in our school, I haven't heard about starting a split session. Is that something that the board is considering?
No, the board hasn't considered anything. There has been a subgroup looking at alternatives. And that was one of the things they looked at, you know, some kind of a schedule. That has been cost, costed out. The board has not approached that. We just explored ideas with Dr. Davis' suggestions for the Braille school, this is the largest size, and see if they're, they have space. They're crowded. So there's no space there. So I think these are all things we're going to have to consider. Just as anecdotally, whenever you have a staggered stock like that, it's typically a one-year solution. It's an expensive solution because you have tremendous busing that you have to, you know, to do with it. And Danbury, we ever developed a Danbury system of a multi-tiered busing system. Could not work. You'd have to have, you know, so much, and, you know, that might not be the most cost-effective. And it would have to be something that would sustain itself for years. So, but the board's going to, we're going to have a workshop on them. We'll let you know so you come and listen. We just begin to talk about ideas. Um, we have a, we have a school, you may have heard me say, and the board may not do, it's been a goal for us to create these, let's just call them little satellite schools and magnet schools. We have, we closed MRI last year. There's the thought that in two years, it can be reopened as a middle school. We have the beginnings of a STEM program and another program that we want to look at, so we're making some recommendations. So, you know, we have possibly a space for it to do that. You know, it's deadly, not deadly rough. Shelter Rock is one that I, we're getting numbers that are just shooting, killing us. A 51% increase. In fact, the meeting we were at with, with Mike McLaughlin, he kind of questioned whether or not everything was booked and we've got to re-verify that. We still have an issue with the elementary school, how we would handle this. We still have a plan for middle school, not much for the, for the elementary. And the high school we're doing is Kathy's, we're trying to work with West on looking for some of the other satellites. But those are all things that came up in the meeting that, meetings since last spring, I think. Some board members and Dr. Lewis, they had, where they talked about alternatives. But the board has not reviewed.
And one thing I would add is that what we're talking about now is more of a strategic solution. I think we all acknowledge that we will not have money in our operating budget, at least for the next year or maybe two, to implement any of the, any of the recommendations that we're going to see. And so, you know, by the time we get two, three years from now, we're going to be in a crisis mode. But hopefully by that time, we'll at least have the money. If the space does exist at MRI or elsewhere, then we'll be able to fund this expansion in our operating budget, just given the enrollment that continues to rise, especially at the elementary level where class sizes, when they get to the middle school three years from now, are going to go up about 100 a grade from where they are today.
And there's just no room?
So that's the storm we're trying to prepare for, even though we don't have the money for it currently. We at least want to have the strategic plan so that when that, when that influx of people does hit the middle school, we can at least address that problem in our operating budget, as well as the space concern.
But to prevent that critical role from happening, then what Kathy said, that building committee is more important than it, we start putting that committee together to prevent that critical situation occurring.
You need a plan, Ben. You need a plan.
We need a plan. But, you know, government will grow. By the time we get the committee together, if they start working, you're talking possibly midsummer.
Well, but there is a committee in town that was established. We're just sort of doing the 2020, so I think that the, the structures there just need to probably be reconvened and, and to look at the materials that we have. So there is something out there. But we're ready to do a workshop for the board, just to sort of start having a discussion about, you know, what's the short-term solution?
Any further discussion? Well, seeing none, I just want to thank the councilmen for coming this evening. I think this was a very productive discussion. I hope you got as much out of it as we did. And we look forward to work, continuing to work with you closely as we go through the budget cycle over the next few months. But thank you very much for, for coming out this evening. Thank you. Thank everyone in the administration for helping us prepare.